To the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting, we're going to begin with the invocation from Council Maney, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Dear Lord, as we move into a new year, we pray for a renewing of our minds, a renewing of our strength, and a renewing of our longing for you. We pray that our focus is on you, our goals are to further your kingdom, and our energy is spent on loving you. We pray you pour out your blessing unto the city of Tyler in this new year. Thank you for the service of our first responders and armed service members. Be with them and their families as they stand on the front lines. As we face possible severe weather in the coming days, be with us, keep us safe, and keep us comforted. It is in your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and special call meeting held on November the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Move to approve. Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A one. Kedrick.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
You have item A one before you. And this, this is actually our, our audit award for our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. This is our thirty-seventh year to receive this prestigious award. You all got a chance to see the award as we took the pictures directly before the council meeting. But this award is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And as I mentioned, this is our thirty-seventh year to get this award. This award, they take our actual audit report, and it's reviewed by peers in the industry that sign up to, to go through our audit reports. They look at our management discussion and analysis, which is at the very front of the audit. It gives you kind of a summary of our overall condition of the city. Also, the financial statements and their presentation, as, as well as the statistical section that just has a good demographic information about our community. This award is definitely a task to complete, and it just is a good reflection of the staff that we have in the finance department as far as the hard work they put into it. Just in particular, I'd like to point out Lauren Justice, Lane Lamb, and Debbie Vance and the rest of the team, they work real hard to get our audit report done, along with our external auditors. Particularly on this report, that would have been Gollum Morgan, I'm sorry, Proco Wilhelm who helped us with that one. So, having said that, we just request the city council consider accepting the Certificate of Achievement Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report for the period ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Kedrick, thanks. Once again, another award, just thank you for what you do and your team. It's very much appreciated, and it's just year after year. So, thank you. Anybody else have any comments for Kedrick?
Thank you. Great job.
We do have one card on this item. Bob Ruer, Bob, you wish to come speak? Just name an address for the record, and we're not going to put you on the clock. Because we know, we know you know how much time you've got.
Bob Ruer, it's on the card, eighteen hundred D. Charles, Tyler. And I come here with the peace and love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and pursuant to the first sentence of U.S. law and our Texas Constitution today. And it's about a budget problem that I experienced yesterday, which is really not, I'm not trying to fix an issue of my personal experience, but what is happening broadly to this body, our county, our state, and our nation. So, as I've said here so many times before, the first sentence of U.S. law protects creation in the Bible so that no human laws can be suffered to contradict creation in the Bible. So, that's the bedrock foundation of our, of our laws. Another bedrock foundation is the Texas Constitution, Article One, Section Two. And it says, inherit, "All political power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their benefit." The faith of the people of Texas stands pledged to the preservation of a republican form of government, and subject to this limitation only, they have at all times the inalienable right to alter, reform, or abolish our government in such manner as they think expedient. Now, if we have a problem with what's happening in our land, that one clause is so very important. And Gorsuch and Kavanaugh have recognized this recently with the way that we've gotten beyond the limits of what our government and our oath, I swore an oath to, have, have, have not protected. So, anyway, the, the other clause is Article One, Section twenty-seven. And that's why I'm here, and I want to thank this body for allowing me to speak, even though sometimes what I say doesn't come out the way I'd like to say it. And I blame that on Buck Fowles because he was my speech teacher. So, anyway, the right of assembly to petition for redress of grievances, and I just have something that needs to be brought to this body so that you are aware. The citizens shall have the right, in a peaceable manner, and I'm trying to be peaceful, peaceable and less agitated than normal, to assemble together for their common good and apply to those invested with the powers of government that issue for redress of grievances or purposes. My purpose here is to express a problem that I think is very serious about petition, address, or remonstrance. Now, real quickly, the purpose of U.S. law is to protect my right of free action or my liberty, and, and so that that will always be preserved. And that's why we elect people swearing oaths to protect the laws that we were given. Yesterday, in our city, uh...
Don't wrap it up. Your internal clocks probably telling you you already had three minutes, so just kind of...
Three minutes?
You're way over three minutes, so let's just kind of wrap it up if you can.
Oh, I saw five here.
I'm sorry, I didn't see five.
So now I'd like a little extra of that five. We swore an oath to protect and defend our rights of free action. My rights and yours were violated when I took a paper statement to a brick and mortar store with the exact amount that I wanted to pay the bill for, and I was charged five dollars extra with no notice given to me, nothing in writing, because I was paying cash. Now, this is a huge deal. That's a violation of our Article One in the U.S. Constitution, Article One, Section eight, Clause five, and possibly Clause six. So, all I'm saying is, we are allowing laws to be made up, just as we allowed laws for masking, distancing, closures of businesses, you know, loss of businesses, loss of jobs, loss of family. And we've got to start following the law. And I'm here to be that black canary, I guess, or, you know, ugly canary in a coal mine to say that we need to really know why we serve. And I, I appreciate the heck out of y'all. I just love you to death. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
What was that last part again? You love us to death?
Yes, and it's true. I told you about this building. Now, I'll get back there.
All right. Appreciate you. That's not an action item, that award, is it?
No, it's just a award presentation.
All right. Z one. Thanks again, Kedrick. Z one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Uh, the first item here is a zone change request from Light Industrial to C one Light Commercial District. This is on Mosaic Way, just north of, or just off of Earl Campbell Parkway. Uh, the applicant's requesting the change to allow for the use of the property, or parts of the property as medical offices. Generally, it's developed, or that area is developed with a mixture of of commercial uses, restaurants, things like that. The surrounding property to the east and south are undeveloped. The, the current M one zoning does not allow for medical offices, and so the change is to allow for a portion of the property to be medical office. This is consistent with the, the future land use guide for the area. You can see here, the property's currently been developed, but the, again, the, the, the change here is to allow for different uses. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve, Z one. Got a motion by McGee, second by McKellner. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Jim, thank you back there for what you're doing out there. All right, Z two.
This is a zone change from C one Light Commercial District to P U R Planned Unit Residential District. Uh, the applicant's requesting the change to develop townhomes on the property. This is off of Peluxie Drive, just south of Shiloh Road. The, um, the property to the north is a, a gas station, commercial use. And then to the, to the east and south are multi-family uses, and to the west is the location, location of a church. Uh, the request would amend the future land use guide to Town Home Garden Apartment, where it's currently commercial development. Uh, you can see, oh, you see the, the existing multi-family uses to the south and east. Uh, the applicant proposes a site plan here, which proposes thirty, thirty units, or attached townhome units with the private street, as you see there on the, on the, on the site plan. Uh, the applicant does propose, on the north side, along Shiloh Road, a co- common area, dog park for, for the residents, which will be accessed through sidewalk along the east side of the property there. The, of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z two.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z three.
This is a request for the closure of a, of an unapproved right of way for Reek Road. Uh, this is east of Old Jacksonville Highway. Uh, the, the, the right of way here, it was previously shown to be on the master street plan as a, a future collector's street. Uh, the, with the adoption of the, the updated master street plan in two thousand and twenty-one, it was no longer included in that, and therefore is, is essentially eligible to be, uh, to, to be closed by the city council. And so, uh, the applicant plans to, you know, utilize half the right of way for, for future development. Uh, the other half would be eligible to be taken in by the, the property to the north. Um, of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval of the closure, subject to it being replanted within six months.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
This is also a request for a thoroughfare closure. Uh, this is for unapproved portions of Endo Street and Reader Lane. This is between Trup Highway and Old Trup Highway on the southeast side of town. The, uh, the applicant proposes to abandon these right of way and combine them with the property. They do own most of the lots around it, and so that would go with their property. Uh, as you can see here, they, they are vacant lots with an unapproved street, and it's been that way since the sixties, so it's been a while. The, uh, of the notices that were sent out, no were returned in favor. One was returned in favor, and there is currently no opposition to the proposed closure. The plan is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z four.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z five.
This is a zone change request from RPO, Restricted Professional Office District, to R two, two-family residential district. Uh, this is on South Flechel Avenue. The applicant's proposing the change to develop a duplex on the property. Uh, surrounding properties to the north and east are, uh, zone R two, two-family, or actually, R one B, single-family. Uh, there's R two in the area, which allows for duplexes. Um, generally, the homes are developed with single-family homes. Uh, to the south and east, or south and west, is a mixture of medical office uses. Uh, the request is consistent with the future land use guide, identifying the area as mixed-use center. The applicant plans to develop a duplex on the property to serve, uh, the, the work, the workforce in that, in that area. As you can see here, the property's currently vacant. Of the notices that were sent out, one was returned in favor and none in opposition, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z five.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed?
James is actually, motion was made by James.
Got a motion by James, who is the second?
Shirley.
Shirley. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z six.
This is a zone change request from P O D Planned Office District to R one B Single Family Residential. Uh, this is off of Old Omen Road. The applicant plans to develop single-family homes on this property. Uh, the surrounding properties are generally developed with single-family homes. Uh, this request is consistent with the future land use guide as it is single-family, medium-low density. Uh, as you can see here, the, the property is located off Old Omen Road. Uh, the, the property, based off of the, the classification of Old Omen, any drive, there will likely be a requirement for shared driveways for these lots to minimize, uh, access on the Old Omen Road, since it is a, a larger street. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommend, recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z six.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z seven.
This is a zone change request, uh, from R one D Single Family Residential, Attached and Detached District, to P U R Planned Unit Residential on a number of properties, as you can see there. Uh, the request is to allow for these lots, or these properties, to be, uh, developed with, uh, with single-family homes with a reduced front yard setback of, of twenty feet. Uh, as you can see, many of those lots are, are smaller. They were already zoned for, uh, smaller, smaller lots, uh, smaller homes. The surrounding properties are planned for single-family development. Um, and the request would amend the future land use guide to si- single-family, medium-low density, but that is, that was all, actually, that, that was the plan to begin with. Uh, as you can see, the, the, the only real change is to amend the, the front yard to twenty feet to better serve these, these, these types of lots. Um, of the notices that were sent out, no were returned in favor or in opposition. Uh, the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z seven.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z eight.
This is a request for a P C D Planned Commercial District Site Plan Amendment. Uh, this is at the corner of West Elm Street and the West Loop. Uh, the proposal is to amend the site plan to allow for an oil change facility on the property. Uh, it's currently approved for a, a bronze restaurant, but that, that hasn't come to fruition. Uh, the surrounding properties to the north and south are commercially, commercially used. To the east are single-family homes. Uh, to the west is also commercial property. Uh, this request is consistent with the future land use guide as a mixed-use center. Uh, as you can see, the, the site plan here, proposing the, the quicenter of oil change facility on the property. One thing to note is that this, this request does have a, essentially, an enhanced buffer yard on the east side, because there is an existing home there. And so that will protect those uses from, or the compatibility between these two uses. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition. The plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
So moved.
Got a motion by McKellner, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z nine.
Uh, this request is a zone change to the east of the property that we just considered. Uh, the request is to change this property from P C D to R one A. The, uh, previous, the previous plan included this property in that development. Uh, now, now it doesn't, and so this property is currently developed with a single-family home. And so this change would bring that use into conformance with, with the code. Um, of the notices that were sent, no were returned in favor or in opposition. Plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z nine.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z ten.
Finally, this request is a zone change from C one Light Commercial District to C two General Commercial District. Uh, this is on, um, along the, or, South Vine Avenue and Fifth Street. Uh, the properties to the north and south are developed with commercial uses. Uh, to the east are single-family homes and AR adaptive reuse. Uh, the applicant plans to develop the, the property with, um, with, uh, to allow for outdoor sales for, for cars. Uh, there are a number of car lots in that area that currently exist, and so this would be in keeping with, with that trend. And so they, initially, the, the change for the, the, the request was to rezone all of those lots you see there on the south side of Fifth Street. Uh, but in keeping, keeping in mind the, uh, the, the homes that are to the west, the applicant did limit the, the request to just the, essentially, the frontage on South Vine, which is the more commercial, uh, activity area. So, the, uh, again, the request is for a car, a car, a car sales facility, and the plan to commission by a seven-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle. Well done. P one.
Darren.
Morning. Darren Jennings, City Engineer.
Morning.
Here to present you with the annual work plan for the half-cent sales tax, uh, board that was approved by the board back in November. You know, the six-day comment period started, and it will be ending by the end of this month, so we can go ahead and start working. But I wanted to go ahead and update y'all of what was included in here, and go from, go from there. Right now, I just want to go over what's currently on, on there, just kind of highlight what all we have been doing, and then we'll go into the new projects. We have, uh, all the street projects, about seventeen million dollars' worth. You know, we just finished Cambridge, so that is a blessing. We also, that's an understatement, I know. We have the additional turn lane, uh, on New Cobham between Shiloh and Reek. We have it north and south. We don't have it during, in that area. We have some pedestrian improvements, or what do some, for the, for the first year, we'll do an ADA transition plan, getting that going. We have some neighborhood connections, where you have a couple of streets that are, that just dead end at a creek. We're gonna, we're gonna connect those two, one being the one on Hankerson, being so students can walk to school that way. Uh, Siders Landing Extension, you, you approved that. That'll, that'll help, uh, down south. And then an old Jacksonville at Capital Drive traffic signal. Traffic projects, we have quite a few. I did leave the, you'll notice, zero for the railroad inventory and improvements program. We were going to do that, but then the N P O decided they would go ahead and do that for the N P O, uh, boundary, and actually, they even included to Smith County. That is underway, and then it's just about done. But all the other projects, you'll even notice the LED curb warning system, uh, on there. So, there's a lot of things in there that are going on. Drainage projects, Thompson Avenue Drainage, you've seen that underway. We coordinated with the, with the Tyson House demolition. It is almost complete. Stagecoach is running about three months ahead of schedule at this current time. Also, some other drainage improvements going on. The numerous drainage improvements being on the last of five sites for that one. Airport, they have several projects, about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars' worth. You can see those. They've been on the list for a while and are underway. Here, we have a facilities, couple of facilities projects, the new I T building. We're starting design on that, and gonna be remodeling that. And Municipal Court Complex, we're going to do a study, we're doing a study to see what would be the best to do for consolidating or not, or just, um, making sure go as we are right now. Current recurring projects, I've split these out, that we have some that are every year. Railroad crossing improvements, based on the results of the N P O study, we will prior, take the priorities on that one, and then we will do, this could be two to three crossings, uh, each year for this one. So, it'll just depend on the severity of the crossing and how much is on there. Annual street maintenance, that right now Chuck Sampson manages, the, the Onyx Seal, the seal coat, crack seal, overlays, all that. Traffic Signal Organization, and we have half a million for pedestrian improvements every year, meaning ramps, sidewalks, and things like that. Now, what we did this year is we, we rated all the new projects from, we rated a lot of the projects. Last year, we rated the new projects and then put them in with, uh, the existing projects that were rated last year. And we just considered just giving them, this is one, two, three, four in the ranking. We said, here are the top projects, we called them tier one, tier two, tier three. Right now, just gonna go over the tier one and tier two. Tier three and four, doesn't look like there was any real possibility of being funded this year. So, I will just, right here, we have the, you can notice there's airport streets, traffic, drainage in here, all of that in here. Now, I wanted to point out the drainage, the emergency stormwater improvements. I did add that this year, because we've had so many projects we have to come at an emergency basis. I just went ahead, let's just count on that, because we haven't been able to do some improvements as much as we need to. So, I have a half million in there, so we don't have to, it's already in the budget instead of having to come and take from something else each year. And I put some in there for the downtown improvements to help with that. That's for the, that's for three years. You'll see different projects in there, the midtown to downtown trail design. We'll figure out where we want to put that and then start the design. That way, we'd have a better, much better chance of getting a, a grant for that if we already have the design complete, which we're responsible for the cost of the design anyway. And you'll notice the last four, yes, we're not going to be able to do those for a dollar. There is a new city, or, excuse me, a state law that came into play that we have to be on the, our half-sent list, our approved C I P list. That is the purpose of those. And we can take money from other things if we need to, but those need to be on the list for planning purposes. Tier two projects means we're gonna fund the tier ones, and then when we have enough money, we're gonna go ahead and go into the tier two. A new municipal court complex, this will, this is a placeholder right now for that. We don't know what we want to spend that on. That is what was given to us previously for, as a, as a project budget. We do have the fire stations, the police fire training facility, and those are, so they can... And those are, so they can keep on track of what they need to be for their master plan. And then we have some more stormwater drainage improvements and then Jeff Davis intersection improvements. And we're, instead of expanding Jeff Davis all the way, we'll make improvements where a lot of the problem are at the intersections. So we'll make the intersection improvements to help traffic flow through the intersections. And those are the projects. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So how much does the half cent bring in annually?
We have been bringing in about twenty to twenty-one million. That's what we have.
Because past year was the first year we hit over twenty million on.
But you also have carryovers from the previous year where you don't spend all the money?
Correct. So these are multi-year projects, most of them.
Like Cambridge, for example, the nine million dollars, some of that was paid in twenty-two, twenty-three, and the remainder is twenty-three, twenty-four. So it's not like we're spending nine million this year.
That is correct. That is correct. So those are the total project costs. I just put that on there so you can see what we have been doing. And we are finishing up, most of these projects are multi-year where it takes, you know, six to nine months of design and then six months to a year to do this.
Well, the half cent program, when did we start that, ninety-four, ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five?
Yes.
And all these projects, and we're not taking any debt, and good program. Any questions for Darren? Well done.
Thank you all.
All right, O one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
So the next item that we have is a proposed amendment to chapter one of the City of Tyler ordinances. And this is related to the policies and procedures related to the disability issues review board. This is a board that has not met since before COVID. It has been inactive and it's one of the things that the city has been looking at trying to bring back. So as we're trying to start to really get this board active again, one of the things that the staff wanted to do was to first look at the guiding documents that were already established, look at similar cities that had similar boards that were already functioning, just to kind of see if there were any comparisons that needed to be done. And we did notice that there were some, what we really felt were clarification amendments, but we did think that they were important to go ahead and put into the plan, which really, one of the items that I wanted to go ahead and identify was, one was just identifying a quorum for the board. That wasn't already in the documents, wanted to go ahead and get that. We're looking at adding a goal that would be to promote the participation in city events and the usage of city amenities among citizens with disabilities. And probably the biggest clarification item is that really refining the scope of the board, which right now, the way that the ordinance is written, it's a little bit ambiguous that it says that it looks at disability issues. But this is gonna be adding that it's really looking at just city facilities, that the scope of the board doesn't go to private property, it doesn't consider the state or Smith County or anything along those lines. So Brent, just doing those items, just to refine the scope. And that is really all that is being recommended through these amendments to the proposed chapter one of the code. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Michael?
Move to approve O one.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M one. Amber. High point of the day.
All right, well, good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council. Last March, we were here after years of planning to ask the Council to allow us to embark on the process of turning our downtown into a true destination. After nine months, I'm proud to say we have done just that. Our team has created something very special for Tyler, something that our community has been proud of. So within that timeframe, we have done numerous meetings with stakeholders. Many of you were part of that. We have created a street, parking, sidewalk, utility, and drainage plan layout, the West Square layout, which is the current square, preliminary construction phasing plan, preliminary opinion of probable cause, concept images and videos were created. Also, the city and county came together and approved the concept plan and the layout at a joint meeting on September twentieth. These are the beautiful renderings and the concept designs that we have created for our community. Just wanted to give you a quick reminder of it. So now, what am I doing here? What are our next steps that we need to make this dream come true? Finalized, we need to finalize the downtown district standards, which is an internal guide to allow for cohesive future steps. So we want to make sure all the planning that we're doing right now in phase one and phase two, when we move forward into expanding that area, that it's a cohesive design, that it's not a mixed match. So we are very excited about this because it's gonna allow for an internal guideline. It's not restriction or anything like that. It is strictly for internal use. We want to prepare construction documents, bid out the project, and actually start the project. So logistics, so the project is including in two phases, simply due to the construction schedule and complexity. Phase one, which be posted by half, includes everything from the right-of-way along Irwin Street, Broadway Avenue, and Ferguson and College Avenue. And I'll get to a map in just a second to help lay out these and visualize it. And then phase two, which Fitzpatrick will handle, is the design and construction of the West Park, which is what the current square is, along with overseeing both projects as general project coordinator. Okay, now I'm gonna try out this new function. So you see here, this is the current boundary of this phase, of phase one and phase two. So you'll see in the, I think I got it, I got it. So there is an outline right here. This is the current, this is the current courthouse, and this is where the new courthouse will be. So you'll see that the city is doing the right-of-way around here, all through in the streets and the sidewalks. And that is the blue area. So that is the first phase. That half will be overseeing where the infrastructure will be taking place. And then phase two, where you can see where it's red, essentially where the current square is, that will be the West Park area, which will be phase two that Fitzpatrick will be leaving. What everyone really wants to know about, what's this project schedule going to look like? So we're hoping in January twenty twenty-four, this month, that we'll be able to begin project design. In fall of twenty twenty-four is when we would like to begin construction. Spring twenty twenty-six is when we'll have that beautiful ribbon cutting on the phase one, which is the current square, the West Park. Summer twenty twenty-six is where we would bid and begin construction for phase two. And then twenty twenty-seven is end of construction for phase two. Okay, the contract details. So what this contract entails is half and Fitzpatrick coming together. That includes architectural and engineering services for the design plan, production, bidding, and construction of this project. So that includes from start to end in twenty twenty-seven. And during this time, the public engagement is a huge, huge part of this. We want to make sure our community stays informed, and we will be doing stakeholder meetings, public presentations as needed, along with a project website that includes updates, scheduling, update projects, where we are in any public meetings that the public can attend. So what I'm here today is a recommendation, is to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute part two of the professional services contract in the amount of two million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty thousand, excuse me, with the Fitzpatrick Arctic and half for the downtown improvement projects. Now I'm open for any questions, suggestions, or excitement.
Any questions for Amber or comments?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm excited about this project. Amber, thank you for your work on this and Steve and your team and half and y'all's team. Thank y'all very much for y'all's work as well. Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
So moved.
With Adam.
I have, y'all couldn't give me time. Cut me off, Dr. McKeller.
I'm sorry, sir.
Y'all, everybody knows how excited I am about this. And I want to thank Fitzpatrick and half, and just everybody that's been involved in all the meetings. And it just, it just blows my mind. And it's something that we've dreamed about. And like we said before with the conference center, you know, you see the vision, you see the dream, but you want to break ground and you want to get started. So I took a picture of the screen when it showed the time, the timeline. So I really hope that October of twenty-four of this year, that we are able to break ground and get it going. But once again, I'm thrilled. Amber, thank you for the presentation, and this is a good step going forward. I'm very proud of our community. So all that being said.
So moved.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Amber. Beat that, Jacob.
I'm excited about water, Jacob.
Somebody is.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jacob Yankor, and I'm with Tyler Water Utilities. And I'm here to present agenda item M two for the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Electrical Assessment. So Golden Road Water Treatment Plant is located inside the loop, near the intersection of Golden Road and McDonald. It was constructed in the nineteen fifties. At the time of construction, Lake Victory was a surface water source for the treatment plant, and it was located near the hospitals. Golden Road is one of two operating water treatment plants in the City of Tyler and is typically responsible for a little less than half the water supplied to the City of Tyler and her residents. During peak demand, Golden Road pumped close to twenty-one million gallons per day during the summer of two thousand twenty-three.
Can you go back to that one last slide?
Sure.
I think that's pretty cool, that Lake Vickery, which is across from UT Health.
Yes, sir.
Was the water, so city's sole water supply at one point.
Yep, yep. Back, I guess that shows how much we've grown right over the last seventy years.
You remember Lake Victory, don't you, Mr. McD?
Go skiing.
Yeah, yeah. Continue, please.
Throughout the last seventy years, Tyler Water Utilities has had numerous expansion and enhancement projects at the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant. Some of these include additional clarifiers and filters, chemical and pumping improvements, aluminum clearwell covers, just to name a few. But throughout all these projects and expansions, some of the original electrical components have remained in place that power a plant that run twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. In recent years, we've run into issues with moving forward on a project to replace the outdated filter control panel due to the antiquated electrical system. There are several high-level issues that we have, that we face with major processes and pumps as large as nine hundred horsepower being powered by such old electrical wiring. One of the first concerns that we have is simply the condition of these seventy-year-old panels and wires that are running through the walls and floors of the plant. And the other concern that we have is exactly where the wires are and where they run from the feeds to the panels to the equipment. So during the master plan, the antiquated system was evaluated to determine that we needed more info to make engineering decisions on the path forward with the current electrical setup. It was recommended in a workshop that the city reach out to an industrial electrical professional, Sheremco Industries. Sheremco came to Golden Road to do a scoping inspection for us in order to define the next steps. We determined that a five-day plant shutdown would be necessary to perform insulation resistance testing of the four hundred and eighty volt cables, to investigate the four hundred and eighty volt panels, our main switch gears, the high-service pump panels, and the filter control panels. Through this process, they will create the necessary labels and single-line diagrams that, for the original wiring. During the shutdown, Lake Palestine will be the sole provider for the entire city. So we've discussed contingency plans with Sheremco that in the event of an emergency, the plant would be brought back onto service. So if something were to happen, both parties would work safely together to restore power as soon as possible to Golden Road. So the path forward and the extent of the work needed from, at Golden Road will be determined after the five-day shutdown. After all testing and investigation has been done, the city staff will be able to prioritize the electrical equipment needs based on the condition that is determined by Sheremco. From there, we'll be able to develop a CIP project and address the electrical upgrades necessary to keep this critical plant up and running for years to come and to continue to deliver safe and quality drinking water to the City of Tyler. So with that, I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute engineering services contract in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars with Sheremco Industries for the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Electrical Assessment.
So how do you determine when to do the five-day shutdown? When the water usage is low or?
So we spoke with our plant staff because they have other maintenance items throughout the year that they're doing when usage is low also. And through that collaboration with the staff during when low demand, that's when the shutdown would occur. And right now, we're shooting for March.
Jacob, when you shut down the plant for five days, do you have to drain that water? Is that water still usable? Or would the Lake Palestine plant service the entire city for the water needs during that time?
Lake Palestine will serve the entire city during the five-day shutdown. And then when the plant is started back up again, Golden Road will go back into serving half the city.
Will that water that's there, is that still safe? Or do they have to do anything with it when it's turned back on?
So my understanding would be, well, yeah.
No, so before the plant would be brought back online, before Golden Road would be brought back online, we would do our standard disinfection protocol throughout the entire plant. And so Bacties would be taken at the different processes to ensure that the water that would then be coming would be delivered to the city. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
But the water storage tanks and everything will stay full and there won't be any drop in pressure where we?
Oh, right, right, yeah. Especially since we'll be doing it during March, since we will, we plan to do this during a low-demand portion of the year. In March, it's a safe time for us to take a plant offline because we typically do have to take one plant or the other offline at different times for, you know, raw waterline inspection or different, different things that would require a plant shutdown. So no, pressures should remain consistent and there shouldn't be any issues.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jacob or Kate?
Well, Jacob, I just wanted to say and to Kate that I'm really, I join in with the city manager. I'm ecstatic about Golden Road, but I also will be really happy when we take down that tank, I believe.
Well, that'll be another item that we'll be presenting to y'all here soon for the engineering services for the Glenwood demolition. We've been working with one of our consultants on that, and that's gonna be coming in front of you in the near future.
Very good, thank you.
Move to approve M two.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. We want to approve as presented.
Move to approve as presented.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first few items I've got, actually, and I see Cameron back there, Cameron Williams was busy during the end of the year. He's busy all the time, especially at the end of the year as we begin this new one. And I just want to kind of talk about some of the different projects. The Grande Boulevard reverse curve, this was something that y'all at the council have taken action upon back in twenty twenty-three. So the final safety improvements for the Grande reverse curve between Holly Tree Jod and Old Jacksonville Highway were installed in mid-December. And these improvements included an LED curb warning system, white profile pavement markings next to the curb, and a wide profile, yellow profile marking in both directions along the center, two-way left-turn lane. The profile markings have raised bumps that drivers can feel if they start to drift out of the traffic lane. The LED curb warning system and pavement markings complement the high friction surface that was installed earlier in the fall. These improvements were recommended as part of the Grande reverse curve safety study, and the improvements are targeted at addressing wet weather conditions and improving the visibility of the curve, especially at night, in order to improve safety. Also, in that kind of that same area, we just, construction on the new traffic signal at Grande Boulevard and Old Noonday Road began in early December. Construction has progressed with most underground conduit and traffic signal pole foundations installed. The next step after the concrete, after, for the foundation is cured, will be the installation of traffic signal poles. The next step after the concrete, after, for the foundation is cured, will be the installation of traffic signal poles. In the meantime, the contractor is completing similar work at the intersection of West Gentry Parkway and West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, where the existing traffic signal is also being reconstructed. And then also for traffic operations, we have on the Intelligent Traffic System Year Three Master Plan with the installation of thirteen new traffic cabinets. And of the thirteen cabinets, four will require new electric service pedestals. And so, staff, Carl Sigalo, our senior traffic signal technician, has created the parts list, designed and laid out the locations for the new pedestals, preparing the foundation, ran the conduit, and poured the concrete foundation. You may have even seen him downtown doing some of the work at some of those locations. This will save the city approximately ten thousand dollars for each intersection with a total savings of forty thousand dollars. And so, like I said, Cameron and his staff continue to do incredible work, and so we're very appreciative of it. Also, the Mayfair, Mayfair Construction is moving along. All the walls are up and painting is going on on the interior of the building. Anticipated completion is towards the end of either January, February, with a grand opening now scheduled for Thursday, April fourth. So, that one we are very excited about. And we also, as we begin twenty twenty-four, the net health has begun their Fit City Tyler Health and Wellness Expo and Lighten Up East Texas kickoff. And so, on Saturday, this past Saturday, the annual Lighten Up East Texas Weight Loss Challenge kicked off at the WT Brookshire Conference Center, and it was relaunched for the first time following COVID. This included a health expo, which was added to the kickoff event to provide participants with access to a variety of resources for their health and wellness journey. An estimated three hundred visitors attended the expo, most of whom joined the Lighten Up East Texas Challenge. Throughout the month, people throughout the East Texas areas continue to sign up through their employers and other public weigh-in locations. Special thank you to Mayor Warren for stopping by to say hello and visit the different vendors that were there. And as a reminder, the City of Tyler is encouraging employees to also participate. We'll be having our own weigh-in sessions and prizes. And so, from now until January thirty-first, if you visit the Glass Recreation Center to weigh in and get signed up, you also get entered to win some awesome prizes along with that. And we're also monitoring, coming next, towards the end of this weekend, as well as beginning of this week, of next week, we're monitoring the weather conditions that are expected due to freezing temperatures from Sat, Sunday, January fourteenth evening to Wednesday, January seventeenth midday. So, our emergency services are already making sure that they're fully prepared. Our streets and traffic services, water and wastewater, solid waste, they're all getting as far as, doing their preparations for this. We will be closed, of course, for Monday, January fifteenth, due to the Martin Luther King Junior holiday. But we will also be, though, like sending out quite a bit of information to residents and businesses to make sure that they are also prepared. We're expecting probably to see about forty-four to forty-eight hours of freezing temperatures during that time period. So, it won't be quite what you have had in, say, with winter storm Uri, but it is something that we want to make sure people are preparing and getting ready for, just as the city will be to assist those in need.
Yep. Any comments for the senior manager before we adjourn?
Thank you, city manager.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.